Hear Gail, not here.
Yeah, she's nowhere near it right this second. Um, okay, so I know what today is. May uh eight, is it? Yeah.
Mm hmm.
Uh, five o'clock calling the select board meeting. Uh, in the Rutland Regional Planning Commission meeting, I guess.
Yes, we have.
Yeah, I'm winging it. Okay. Um, yes, yeah, you're up.
Um, so thank you. I'll start with an introduction. I'm Stephanie Burke, a planner with the Rutland Regional Planning Commission. And I'll thank you guys for making space for us tonight uh to come and talk about our third and final phase of community engagement for the regional plan update. Almost done. Um, so in this third and final phase, we will be sharing with the public uh the first full draft of the plan and we'll be seeking alignment on the plans, goals, vision, policies, actions. Um, and so I'd like you to be thinking about two engagement questions that we're asking the public during this phase. And they're here on the first page of the slide deck, kind of one and two. Um, you know, does the plan reflect the right community economic development priorities for the Rutland region? And do these priorities make the region a place that you want to live, work, and play? So really trying to kind of just connect with folks uh um in an easy way um in terms of how to react to the draft. Um, for those people joining online, I would maybe point you to rutlandrpc.org backslash plan twenty twenty six. That's the landing page for everything related to the regional plan update. And you could actually find PDFs of the materials that we're looking at here in the office um on that page. So just in case you wanted to pull something up and follow along. Um, but in terms of tonight's session, we're, I'd like to provide just a quick recap of the regional plan purpose and the design principles. Um, so basically just a summary of what the plan is and why it's important, you know, why we're doing this work, why I'm here, um, followed by an overview of the the plan elements. So an overview of the plan chapters um in terms of the topical chapters of the plan, and we'll do a little bit deeper dive into the land use chapter. And specifically the regional future land use map. And then we'll wrap up with just a a summary of the various opportunities to provide input at this phase of the planning process. So in terms of the regional plan purpose and design, um, there's one of those. There's some extras here on the seat. Yeah.
Help smooth follow.
Yeah.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah. Um, in in terms of the the plan's purpose and design, it it wasn't folks in the Rutland Regional Planning Commission office that sat around and thought, you know, it'd be a great idea to draft a regional plan. Um, the the requirements for such a plan are laid out in state statute. So Title twenty four, Sections forty three oh two and forty three forty seven um are pretty much the enabling legislation that requires all eleven regional planning commissions in the state of Vermont to prepare a regional plan uh for their their planning district. Uh, the plan is a comprehensive eight-year plan to guide and accomplish coordinated and efficient community economic development in a way that balances economic development with other social, cultural, and environmental priorities. So the current regional plan uh was last adopted in twenty eighteen. It'll be expiring in the spring of next year. So this updates, you know, adoption track um has us scheduled to have the update adopted prior to our current plan expiring, uh much like y'all would do with your town plan, right?
That we are doing with our town plan. Ours expires in September, so.
Okay, so you're in the midst of this work, so there'll be uh some similarities in kind of the, I think, the purpose of the plan, but yours will be focused very at very much at the local level where this covers the entire Rutland region. So the twenty seven member municipalities, which encompass all of Rutland County except for Pittsfield. All right, so the plan is intended to help shape the pattern, design, and function of communities in the region in a way that we hope will best meet future needs. Um, and at the center of this effort is an analysis of present and future land uses and identifying areas for growth and conservation. Um, and we do that through the regional future land use map, much like you have a future land use map in your town plan. Um, that's what makes this plan, I think, distinct from anybody else in the region working in the community economic development um uh arena. Nobody else is is making a map like this. This is kind of the the lane of the regional planning commissions. This is kind of in in terms of that broad category, you know, that broad category of community economic development. This is kind of our lane. Um, so this is kind of at the center of our plan, much like the future land use map is at the center of your town plans. So to make sure that this plan, you know, not only uh complies with what's required under statute, we've also established some design principles very early on in this process. So we started planning for this update back around this time in twenty twenty three. Um, and we laid out some design principles that aligned with the Regional Planning Commission's Declaration of Inclusion and Title Six Plan. And they are flexible, locally led, equitable and sustainable, and outcome driven. So we want this plan to be flexible in order to meet the unique the unique needs of our twenty seven uh different municipalities that we represent in the region. This is not intended to try to be a one-size-fits-all plan. You try to make sure that it it is flexible to address the needs of the region. Um, we felt we felt very strongly about developing an engagement strategy that would allow for um opportunities for input throughout the planning process. And not just at the end, we really wanted this plan to be locally led. We um had three phases of engagement, as I mentioned earlier, and we believe that's important in order to increase the probability of success in accomplishing the goals in this plan and better ensure that some of our communities are not favored over others. Um, in terms of the plan being equitable and sustainable, we want to demonstrate by embracing the concepts of diversity, equity, and climate resilience um that those will be key to achieving our community economic development goals. And then I think most importantly, and what is different from the current plan is that we want this plan to really be outcome-driven. We want to ensure that our goals and policies have clearly defined actions to be completed by the Regional Planning Commission and include indicators of progress or measures in order to gauge our our success towards achieving the plan's community economic development goals. So just that kind of brief recap to make sure we're all on the same page as to what the plan is and um the, you know, directives under state statute. So like the enabling and the enabling legislation to develop the plan, statute also outlines the elements that need to be included in the plan in Title twenty four, Section forty three forty eight A. So as I'd mentioned earlier, kind of at the center of this planning effort is land use planning. So the little graphic kind of has land use at the core. And the plan also uh addresses economic development, cultural resources, transportation, housing, community facilities and public utilities, enhanced energy, the working landscape, so thinking agricultural and forestry industries, natural resources, and climate resilience. So it is a very broad plan to kind of cover all of the key aspects of community economic development. Um, so we'll transition now and kind of do a a start, our deeper dive into the land use chapter specifically. Um, and I can't really talk about land, the land use planning framework unless we kind of touch on Act one eighty one. So hopefully folks had a chance to either attend one of the Act one eighty one trainings that were at the Regional Planning Commission a couple of weeks ago or had a chance to review the prep materials. Um, because I'm not going to be going into the, you know, nitty gritty of um all of these parts of the Act one eighty one land use planning framework. But I brought copies of the prep materials in case you want to reference them any at any point during this conversation. So Act one eighty one was passed into law last year, and it was intended to overhaul Vermont's land use planning framework um in terms of modernizing how Vermont directs public investments to designated areas and speeds up the transition of Act two fifty two, what they're calling location-based jurisdiction. So not just jurisdiction based on the size of a project, but on its particular location. The thing that did not change with Act one eighty one is kind of the longstanding state land use planning goal, which is to plan development in a way that will maintain the historic settlement pattern of our compact downtown and village centers separated by more rural countryside. So that is also the goal for our, the regional plans, land use chapter. Um, Act one eighty one established eleven new land use categories. Um, underneath the map, the big map that I brought tonight of the proposed regional future land use maps with Tim Miss piece of that in the current. And you can see there that there were three land use categories at the time that this vintage of regional future land use map was developed. So Act one eighty one has kind of significantly expanded what we're used to as far as the land use categories in the Rutland region. Um, but I think what's really good about the change is that it now standardizes land use categories across the state. So all regional planning missions are talking about land use categories in this thing. Um, so I wouldn't get too caught up in the current future land, regional future land use map because it it will be changing um quite significantly in terms of the number of categories. But maybe not so much in terms of the type of land uses as far as intensity in the community. So the land use categories are presented here on this slide. And starting from left moving right, the first seven categories are what are considered kind of the growth categories. And then the 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 three rural are where lower density growth or conservation would be prioritized. So the first four, the downtown center, the village center, a planned growth area, and village area are what I kind of been referencing as the core four because they are the land use categories that will align with the new state designation program. So Tim Miss has a state designated village center. So it's that program that I'm that has been, um, I think, I guess you could say overhauled as a result of Act one eighty one. Um, there are currently five different state designation designation categories. Um, and as of the beginning of next year, those will get consolidated down to two, either a center or a neighborhood. So any um downtown or village centers that have gone through the state designation program prior to the end of this year will transition in with um their current benefits and be just become a center as of the beginning of next year and planned growth areas and village areas. Um, anything mapped in that land use category in your community would transition in and be eligible for the neighborhood benefit. Um, the prep materials kind of outline what the different um benefits are. If that's something of interest, you know, you can kind of dive in and 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 look at that, but the punchline being if you have an already established village center, you should transition in to the new, you know, the new program with your same benefits. Okay. So the core four also are related to the location-based Act two fifty jurisdiction tiers. And there will be three different tiers that apply to areas mapped as one of those four core. Okay, so if you are mapped as a one of the four core, the tier one jurisdiction relates to either eliminated or reduced Act two fifty permitting in those mapped areas if you meet certain criteria as a community. The tier three areas um will be the subject of a future rulemaking process under the Land Use Review Board to identify areas for expanded Act two fifty jurisdiction related to the protection of critical natural resources. So the first of the public input meetings for that rulemaking process is happening this month, and after tonight's meeting, I'll forward the notice on to Gail so she can share with folks accordingly. Um, so nothing on the proposed future land use map for the region aligns with a tier three area. I just want to make that clear. You know, that is going to go through a separate rulemaking process. Um, and then basically what is left, if you don't have an area that is eligible or designated as tier one for what will be identified at some point next year as tier three will be the tier two where it's Act two fifty jurisdiction a- as usual. With the exception of a new provision that they're calling the road rule. And the prep materials that I sent ahead of time give you the specifics about what linear footage of road construction would trigger that jurisdiction. Okay, so that's kind of the framework for the core four and changes to the new state designation program and Act two fifty jurisdiction as a result of Act one eighty one. In terms of the other land use categories, the transition areas, enterprise areas, and resource-based recreation areas um are also considered growth areas but would be outside of the core four, land areas outside of the core four. And then we have kind of the the rural category of land use um areas, the rural conservation, the rural ag forestry, and the rural general. So in terms of the order of mapping, it would be all of the downtown center moving to the right. Then the rural areas would be mapped, starting with the rural conservation. Um, and then the rural ag forestry are 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 um parcels as of twenty twenty three that are enrolled in the current use program for either agriculture or forestry. And then the rural general is basically anything that's left that hasn't been mapped as something other. Hamlets are a land use category established under Act one eighty one, but all that it is is a dot on a map. Um, and there aren't any hamlets mapped in Tim Miss. So um there really aren't any benefits or, you know, you know, def- there's not really a definition. It's just really an acknowledgement of a historic settlement that really, that doesn't currently meet any of the other definitions of these land use categories. So any questions on kind of the framework that we're dealing with? Folks kind of have a general understanding of where we're at?
Not at all.
Not a great Tim Miss.
Just in general, in general, I think it's, but that's my comment, I think.
I I'm, you know, talk to your legislator.
I.
Yeah, right? Um, we're, we're, we're just implementing what the legislature has directed. So in terms of these land use categories, I want to just talk now about them in the context of the region so that we can then drill down and talk about them in the context of Tim Miss. Um, because I think it's important that you kind of have an understanding of how everything's sugaring off as a whole, so that when you look at Tim Miss, you can kind of have that that context. Um, so this slide here kind of talks about the areas that are designated for higher density growth. Um, so the map that displays where these areas are physically located is intended to guide development by designating areas for growth or conservation based on existing environmental infrastructure and community factors. So in terms of the core four, we will end up given this current working version of the regional future land use map with thirty nine designated centers. So nine downtown and thirty village. That would be an addition of five village centers that don't currently exist um under the state designation program, but they're areas that meet the definition for a village center. So we're mapping them as such. And at the beginning of next year, if the communities want to have those areas mapped as village centers, they would transition in with what they're calling step one benefits for um the center designation.
Can you say who those are?
In terms of who's getting the new ones?
Yeah, who's who hasn't designated a village but has, you said it was five areas.
So there's five new ones. I know that there are two in Clarendon. I don't know off the top of my head where the others are. Um, but that information should be available in the materials from the Act one eighty one training, so I can always get back to you and let you know.
No, I was just curious.
Okay. Um, the the punchline here, when we're looking at land use planning, is kind of we look at the percent of the total land area in the region and uh the percent of buildings, right? Because the land use goal is to try to maintain those historic settlement patterns of concentrating growth in your downtown and village center centers and then maintaining a more rural, surrounding rural countryside. So the two land use categories of downtown center, village center are going to be comprising less than half a percent of the land area, but six and a half percent of the total buildings in the region. And they will be, you know, one of those two categories, or maybe both of those categories are mapped in it in twenty six of our twenty seven towns. So there's only one town in the region that doesn't have a downtown or village center mapped. In terms of the next growth land use categories, planned growth areas and village areas, we will have a total of sixteen designated neighborhoods um with nine planned growth areas and seven village areas in fourteen of our twenty seven towns comprising just over two percent of the land area, but thirty two percent of buildings. And then as we look at the other three growth areas, they're they're not as common in the region. The transition area, for example, has only been mapped in four of our towns and the most um the 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 town with the most transition area mapped in it, I think, is Rutland Town. So kind of along those Route four and seven corridors coming out of Rutland City. So occupies a very small percent of the land area with a relatively small percent of the buildings in the region. The enterprise areas, although there's twelve towns with that area mapped in it, also occupies a pretty small percent of both land area and contains a small percent of the buildings. The enterprise areas are air are are where um there is industrial or mineral extraction or larger-scale commercial um land uses. So think like the airport, think any of the sand and gravel pits or the quarries. Think um like the auto dealership areas. So there are places where there's a larger land area associated with that land use and kind of the infrastructure to support it. And then the resource-based recreation areas occupy just under two percent of the land area in the region, six and a half percent of the buildings and are mapped in eleven of our towns. So these are areas where there is a recre- more of a recreation industries, not just recreational opportunities. So think things like the ski resorts, the ski, you know, the ski areas, um as well as the lakes um in the region. Um, so kind of the the lake towns. Tim Miss actually has this land use category mapped around Tim Miss, as we'll see. So the punchline is for setting seven different land use categories, the percent of the total land area designated for this higher density growth in the region is six percent. Um, so when you look at this map and you see the green, the blue, and the yellow, that, or sorry, everything but the green, the blue, and the yellow, that's six percent of the land area. So kind of the dark purples and the different shades of pinkish lavender. Okay? Um, so the flip side, areas that are prioritized for lower density growth or maybe conservation are the three rural categories. Those three rural categories are mapped in all of our twenty seven towns. So everyone has a rural conservation area, a rural ag forestry, and a rural general. Um, the, I, as I mentioned previously, the rural ag forestry are those parcels as of twenty twenty three that are enrolled in the current use program. Comprises thirty five percent of the land area and about six and a half percent of buildings. Um, a little bit uh more in terms of land area is the rural conservation. Um, but about, you know, close to the six percent of buildings. And then finally, everything that hasn't been mapped would fall into that rural general category. And that's about seventeen percent of the land area in the region, but forty percent of the buildings. So.
So I have a question. The rural conservation would be something like, like the land trust, like we have conserved lands and things like that. Okay.
Yep, yep. So on page three of the prep materials is actually the definition.
Okay.
So it, you know, there's uh areas of significant natural resources, and then there's a list of what is meant by that. And then parcels in the Vermont Protected Lands database, which would contain lands that have been protected for conservation purposes. Those would also be in that category. Yes. So the punchline being um the percent of the total land area that would be designated for lower density growth or conservation is ninety four percent. And I'm I'm stressing the fact that you know, there there is growth allowed, you know, or or prioritized in these areas. And it especially the rural general, um, but it's just intended to be lower density growth. And that's likely because there isn't the other infrastructure in place in those areas to support high-density growth. Like roads or utilities, things like that.
Municipal water, municipal sewer.
Yes, utilities. Yeah, exactly, exactly. And, you know, if you look at the percentages and kind of how things have been distributed as far as land use areas around the region, I I hope that you, it resonates with you in terms of the land use goal, right? Uh, you know, the the state has kind of established a a land use planning goal of maintaining, you know, development in a kind of clustered high, more high-density downtown and village centers than surrounded by the, a more rural countryside. With, in some cases, lower-density development or areas where, you know, you you could develop, but there may be um challenges to developing that area. For example, if you are enrolled in the current use, you know you can take that property out of current use and develop it, but there are penalties for doing that. So think of that as more of a challenge or an impediment to to growth or development in that area. And the same with the conservation layers. You know, if you have certain natural resources on a parcel, it can be more challenging to develop there. You know, I think wetlands or, you know, things like that. So with the understanding kind of of how things are sugaring off, at least on a regional level, if you want to roll that plan, the plan back out. Roll that plan, the plan back out. What kind of walk through what this all looks like for Timoth? Yeah, and I'd encourage you, feel free to kind of look at the map. Get a sense for how things are 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 being laid out. But in terms of the land use categories that are designated for the higher density growth. You have a the village center. Which is the existing footprint of what you've already received um, as a state designated village center. Right in the core of town.
Told to keep that little. When we did it, we were told to keep it little. They wouldn't let us. Add anything to it.
Okay.
So that's why it's it is the way it is. So.
So that's interesting. Did you want to keep it little? Or did you, was there an interest in potentially expanding the boundaries of that?
Well, there was discussion of it depending on. You know, who owns on which side of it, but.
Okay.
And we did the whole thing. Richard. Amori, I think, helped us through this.
Right, so.
And we were. You know, we were encouraged to keep it small. They wanted it compact. So that's.
And that I I that is, I I that is my understanding of what folks experienced in getting that designation through the program. There is an opportunity now with the way village centers are defined in Act one eighty one to adjust those boundaries. Um, the the staff in our office doing the mapping is Logan Solomon. Logan had seen somewhere in either a town planning document or something related maybe to your. Village center application that um, Timoth wasn't interested really in a in developing. In the village center. So it was more intended to preserve what's here.
Correct, because there isn't much here that not wanted to develop.
Right. But if there if there were parts of abutting property that met the definition. Under Act one eighty one for a village center, there may be an opportunity to expand that boundary. If that is of interest. Um, you know, Logan didn't touch your boundaries because he didn't get the sense from that he was seeing from other documents that that was of interest to the community?
I don't think that it is.
Okay, then you're good where you're at.
Yes.
We're not up in the Walmart.
So I'll take it with me anyway. So um.
They're gonna be busy in Rutland Town.
Yeah. So the village center obviously occupies a occupies a very small percent of the land area in Timoth. Um, and then the next largest land use area would be the resource-based recreation area. That is mapped as pretty much a buffer around Timoth Pond. So it's that pale greenish kind of color.
So that is a higher density area. Would that ever have a neighborhood designation instead of recreation?
So I don't think that you need the definition.
Okay.
Of neighborhood area.
What I can say.
As far as. What? Cause the neighborhoods would have to be either planned growth or village area. And I think what would hang up. Would be. I think there's no public water down there.
Right, there's no public access. It's privately owned all the way around. And it's zoned. The lake shore has a zone and it doesn't go anywhere. It just goes along.
So this may not align perfectly with local zoning, which is okay, right? This is not, this is only a regulatory tool. Uh, under Act two fifty or section two forty eight. So when you have a a development project that triggers Act two fifty, one of the. Application questions says, does your development conform with the regional plan? So that's kind of when this map would come into play. Um, it would also get triggered if a proposed development met the criteria for substantial regional impact. I I don't. Envision a development intimate that would rise to that level.
So does does this?
So.
Does this buffer have to be this wide? Is there a designation of how wide that?
What I would suggest is as part of the follow-up to tonight's meeting, because this is really just meant to be the start of a conversation. Is for you to, you know, submit that as part of maybe some follow-up questions that you might have on the on the on the map or, you know. The land use categories or. Anything related to the proposed regional future land use map.
Do you show Timoth's channel or, you know, the water?
Says. Now there's the gravel pit.
So. The like of the the water body, I don't think would be shown unless it was like a pond. Um, but my. If if a property that is within either the FEMA map flood plane or state map river corridor is enrolled in the current use program. That part of that area would show as blue, right? Because that trumps. If it's in the current use program. Otherwise, all of that area. Within the FEMA map flood plane or state map recorder should be showing up as green. Okay.
Yeah, I'll be true here.
Yeah. The state owns twelve hundred acres. The channel. Legend is over there, but you know.
So the dark, the green would be rural conservation. Okay.
Was Timoth's over there.
So the. Village center and the. Resource-based recreation land use areas are the two from kind of the growth categories mapped in Timoth, and they are about one percent of your land area.
So what if all the people around the lake don't want this big growth area danger?
Unless you don't want it mapped as resource-based recreation, and it'll probably fall into a rural general category.
Yeah.
Would be my guess.
It's pretty well, pretty well built out.
Yeah.
I mean, there's there's eighty pints around that lake, so it's it's not like anybody's going to come from the back and. Get access to it.
Right, and. I think you're misinterpreting. What's already there is kind of high-density growth around that resource. And they wouldn't be there were it not for.
The lake.
The lake.
But so my point is. It's built out. It's probably built out as much as it could possibly be.
Yeah.
So, you know.
But it's high density. It's not low density.
Right.
Right?
Right, but but we're getting at is that it's not going to be any higher density.
And that's fine. It's it's intended to reflect kind of the la- the land juice in that area.
The current land use in that area.
Right? You're not going to revert back to low that you there. It's it's a re- it's a high-density resource-based recreation. You land use.
But it's but it's about a hundred and twenty-five feet around the lake. That's. That's developed, so it's not. You know, a thousand feet or whatever this is.
Right. I would highly encourage you to have that be one of your follow-up questions regarding the map and how the boundaries are are laid out.
And does that get directed to the mapper or to you?
There's a slide that gives you instructions.
Okay, good to know.
Yep. So the the slide with the pie chart that we're looking at, number one here, tells you exactly how to. Uh, provide feedback on the map. In terms of any question, is it questions that you might have about why something's not the way it is? Or if you're. Seeking adjustments to the land use boundaries. Um, that is something that could be de- um, discussed on a case-by-case basis.
Says by May thirtieth.
Yeah, we're yeah, we're asking, we're asking for towns to provide feedback within three weeks of our our meeting with them. We have twenty seven towns that we're performing, you know, these meetings with. And in order to ensure that we can respond in a timely way. And still meet our deadlines for finalizing the plan, we're asking for folks to stagger their inputs so that we can process it. Not we, you know, we can't process twenty seven towns getting input on the same day.
And so do you want the input from the select board, the planning commission, or individual people?
I, that is for you all as a community to decide, right? We are not going to be arbiters. For conflicting information, right? If we get conflicting, if we, if our office receives. Feedback from. Anybody representing Timoth. And if there are conflicts, we're going to kind of be pushing that back to the select board to say, hey, this doesn't, you know, these are at odds. Could you. Decide how you'd like us to proceed on behalf of the community? So um.
This would have been nicer than to have like two months ago. So I I I know just as a general, like when you guys are spitballing, like three weeks, you know, like the. Like the whole planning commission probably would have really, it would have been better, you know, for us to look at this. And I know that it's a time constraint, but I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's not like we sat on it.
But for.
Share.
But for the town.
It was ready.
But for us, it becomes, three weeks becomes a very short amount of time for us to sit down as.
Time, I would suggest that be part of your feedback. And you know, if you need, if there are extenuating circumstances where you can't get people together to look at it within that three weeks and you need another week or two.
But also as a general, as a general, like, you know, as you guys are working with towns. That's not enough time for, just as a general, you know, like that's. We don't, you know, we're a volunteer, we're all volunteers here. So having to do things, you know, within three weeks suddenly become.
Hear you.
That that becomes a very inconvenient.
Stay here.
Yes, yes. And I'll also give you, you know, the rutlandrpc.org backslash plan twenty twenty six landing page. Has a digital PDF of that map. So you can look at it on a computer screen. It has a copy of the slide deck, so you could post that with. Post this with maybe meeting minutes for tonight as as well as the link. And it also has a link to the ARC-based interactive map for the whole region. So you could zoom in, you could click on a land use. Category and it'll highlight it. So and it has an ortho photo background, so you'll see the Timoth channel and things like that. Okay?
So it's interesting, the lake doesn't have a lake association, but they have a group that fights milfoil. They're having a meeting towards the end of May, so I think I want to take this. To get some input from them.
And you know, make sure that when you're seeking input, you know, you're you're expressing to folks. You know, the role of the regional plan, right? This is not a regular, you know, we're not trying to like. Regulate. You know, development in Timoth. We're trying to come forth with a a. Region-wide. Plan for community economic development. Um, any development that occurs in Timoth that doesn't trigger Act two fifty or a section two forty eight state permit. Is going to be regulated at the local level like you are regulating development now. I mean, we've had a regional plan in place since the seventies, right? So, you know, this isn't something new per se. It's just new land use categories that are standardized for the state.
Right, I just. I just don't want. Somebody to look at this from, you know. Akash and say, oh, that's a great opportunity. Let's go build some recreation there when. In fact, it's probably not going to be, not very viable to do.
Buy a piece of property, right? I mean. There's a, right?
Right, I mean, there's a process for it, but if you're saying this is where some future growth should occur, then, you know. Maybe we want to have a little input about.
Right, absolutely. Yep, yep. So in terms of the other categories that are mapped into it, you're in the three world then. Um. The highest percentage of land area is in the rural ag forestry category. So you must have a lot of persons enrolled in current use into myth.
Seventeen, come on. We have about. Um, I want to say thirty percent of the land is thirty percent.
Yeah. So then got rural conservation coming in after. The rural ag forestry with about thirty thirty-six percent of the land area. And that leaves you with just under ten percent that is unmasked, so would default or fall into the rural general category. So kind of ninety-nine percent of the land area in Timoth is falling into those rural categories. With just the village center and the resource-based rec area. Falling in the kind of areas where there's higher density growth. So just like Act one eighty one um. Developed standard land use categories to be used across the state, the Vermont Association of Planning and Development Agencies. Um, developed a standardized statewide methodology to map those categories. So when you're doing your review, I just want to manage expectations and be clear that. We we are not going to be, you know, adding land use categories that aren't part of what has been established under Act one eighty one. So we're, you know. Your town plan land use categories may differ from the regional future land use map categories, and that is okay. Um, but we kind of need to stick with what's been prescribed under statute as to the land use categories for the region. Um. And because there's a standardized methodology for mapping the boundaries of these areas. Um, you know, there is some wiggle room there, but in order for an area to be mapped a certain way. It needs to meet the definition of that land use category. So as you're kind of doing your review, I would encourage you, like, you know, Judy, you asking, you know, could there be some type of. Land use category that would benefit from a neighborhood designation? And those two, the planned growth areas and village areas, different from village center. Um, you know, have certain criteria in order to be mapped that way. And I don't, as I, as we were talking, you don't have the utility part of the criteria. So just to help kind of make sure that. You know, you don't ask for something that you just don't meet the definition for. You know, it might be helpful to be referencing this as part of your review. But, you know, we we need to. Present the final plan. To the regional plan board. At the beginning of September. Um, in order to make the submittal to the land use review board, which is required. You know, a certain number of days before the first hearing. And we need. To make that submittal to the land use review board the day after the September sixteenth. Regional plan board meeting. That's why the schedule is the way it is. In order for us to. You know, help finalize the map with our towns, we do have to set, you know, a timeframe for completing that work, unfortunately. Um, the schedule is. You know, driven by the first hearing date, which has been set for January twentieth. In order for us to get the plan adopted before the current plan expires. So.
I didn't catch that date.
January.
The first hearing is currently targeted for January twenty. Yeah.
I thought you said January, but it was like, wait, I don't have this ready by September.
Yeah, no, it.
Sorry, I.
There's so much that needs to be done. Prior to the first hearing, and in order to have the plan actually written and finalized and then go to production, right? There's a month, a month's worth of time for it just to be prepared by a professional layout designer. Um, you know. That's where things are sugaring off. You know, we we've got to have a final, we've got to have everything finalized. To send to the the layout person by um, the end of July. So. We're kind of now, we started this process in October of twenty twenty-three. And worked throughout all of twenty twenty-four, you know, researching. Um, doing phase one and phase two of engagement, phase two of engagement, we we shared kind of draft working policies to get reactions to. Now we're going to be ready to kind of share the full first draft of the plan. Um. In the beginning of June. As you know, the the point of everything is not just to to make a map. Um, it's. You know, to. Designate areas where certain priorities are going to be furthered to achieve the broader community economic development goals for the region. Um, so in addition to being able to provide feedback on the map itself. Um, the, as I said, you know, the the first draft of the plan is is rolling out, and the regional planning commission totally recognizes that. Um, that plan is dense. There's no way around it. When you looked at the. Plan elements, there's a lot of chapters. Those are just the topical chapters, right? So there's eleven of those, and it. It's a big document and to try to digest the information and react to it can be challenging. Um, so we tried to come up with ways to present the priorities in different levels of detail. Which would require different levels of. in different levels of detail, which would require different levels of effort on behalf of somebody looking at it. Um, so the easiest kind of lighthearted way, um, that we've developed is an illustration of the region with, you know, graphics that depict kind of key takeaways from each of our chapters. So, um, all of the topical chapters of the plan elements from the slide deck are represented in the graphic. And a digital version of this is available on that Rutland RPC dot org backslash plan twenty twenty-six website. Um, so this is intended to be a really lighthearted way of kind of expressing what, you know, is covered in the plan. Um, so that hopefully you see something and it sparks an interest and it may, um, it may motivate you to wanna read a chapter summary. So instead of having to commit to reading of the whole chapter, we've also prepared one-page chapter summaries um, for all of those topical chapters, they include the goal statement for that topic as well as a recap of those, the, kind of the vision, the underlying vision of this plan is making sure that we come out of it not only with achieving community economic development, but in a way that is healthy, equitable, and resilient. So there's a quick summary of what it means to be a healthy, equitable, and resilient community from the perspective of each of the chapters. This, then it, we give you a, a kind of the key takeaways as far as the current conditions for housing, for transportation, um, to establish kind of a baseline. You can't really map out a, a course for moving forward for the next eight years if you don't have a good understanding of where we're starting. So there's a current conditions section of each chapter, and that summarized in the chapter summary along with the future trends, kind of what's shaping the direction of where we're gonna go and kind of what, what we think the needs are in order to accomplish the goal, uh, for that part of community economic development. And then we have a brief summary of the, the, like, what's next, what are the policies, actions, um, in order to you know, achieve the goal. So the chapter summaries, maybe a ten, ten fifteen-minute level of investment to kind of get a sense for what are the key takeaways. And then if there's a chapter that, that is of particular interest to you, the full draft of the plan will be available on that website, um, in early June. So we're, we're supposed to be getting everything back from the layout, um, consultant uh, the very beginning of June, so that would be, be posted in that as soon as it's available. And then we have a very simple two-question poll, the two questions I started with tonight um, for people to respond to, is it yes or no? And then there's kind of an open answer block to provide, you know, your feedback. So looking to wrap up all of the phase three engagement by the end of June. Cause then we, we enter what will be kind of our last three weeks of finessing as far as drafting. A couple of weeks of review, and then lock it down, and off it goes.
Okay.
Okay? So
Sherry has a question.
Oh, Sherry, great.
Sure.
Uh, where can we get a copy of what you handed out to everybody tonight? I can't find it on your website.
Oh, you go to Rutland RPC dot org.
Yeah.
Backslash plan twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
And if you scroll, the first thing you should see on that page is this graphic.
Yeah, I saw that.
Then scroll down and it says upcoming events, and then there's a whole list of all of the special town meetings. So look for the Tinmit meeting.
Right.
And there'll be links, two links underneath the headline for tonight's meeting. One will be a link to the PDF of the big map.
Right, I saw that.
It will be a PDF to the link of this slide deck.
Okay, I didn't realize that, thank you.
You're so welcome, and right above that will be the link to the interactive version of the map.
That's annoying.
The Act one eighty-one materials are also provided right on that page so that you can see kind of in a digested version as opposed to reading through statute, the definitions of the land use categories. Um, and kind of the new state designation program highlights as well as the Act two fifty tiers. The one last thing I wanted to ask you guys before I leave, um,
I don't remember her saying.
Is Tinmit has a tra- a transient, a non-transient community, non-community water system, right? An NTNC, public water system.
We have a public water system that serves the fire department, the town, and the school.
Is anybody else allowed to connect to that? No, okay, so uh, it related to whether the town would be one B eligible. Um, and the only thing that was precluding you from being Act two fifty tier one D eligible was up, you know, provision of public water. Um, but in a, in a village center, if you didn't have public sewer, you at least had to have soils suitable for community septic, which there are suitable soils mapped here. But I'm
The town's just remote across the road.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm thinking that the NTNC wouldn't qualify as a public water source because you, there's no capacity in it, nobody else can connect to it, correct? Okay, so I, I don't, I mean, if, if you're interested in exploring tier one B jurisdiction, that would be the only thing holding you back, if you wanna ask that question, we can certainly forward it to the land use review board for interpretation, but if it's not something that you're interested in, then
So if somebody else that could tap into it, would it have to be like a business, or is that up to us to decide, or?
So the way that the eligibility
If you need to fill your fire trucks, that would, should take precedence over anything else.
Yeah, so the, the criteria for a one B area, remember one of those core four, so your village center is part of the core four. In that one B area, there has to be adequate public drinking water and sanitary sewer system capacity for compact housing. So it sounded to me like you don't have reserve capacity in your, in the public water system um, for any additional connections.
Right, I mean, I'm thinking like roadhouse or something like that, you know, but, you know, but they have a well, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I, it, it's kind of a gray area because it's, you're not a public community water system.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I just wanted to at least
It's only a public water system because the school is on it.
Yeah, I get, I get that.
We had to
But if you have reserve capacity, there may be the ability to demonstrate that that met the tier one D eligibility criteria, if that's something the community was interested in.
Well, what advantage would that be to be a tier one eligibility? What, what does that give?
Sure, it gives reduced Act two fifty jurisdiction. So that's described on pages six, seven, and eight of the prep material, I'd reference you to that. So if you became tier one B for your village center, it basically means any housing or mixed-use development in that area that was fifty units or less on ten acres or less would be exempt from Act two, two fifty permitting and would just be regulated through your local zoning and subdivision bylaws.
So there's no real advantage, there's no advantage.
Yeah, I mean, that's something for you guys to decide, I'm just letting you know what the potential opportunities are. Okay.
So I have one question that I raised early on. And I know I'm an old dinosaur, but I have to stick up for the little people that do not have access to phones so that they can scan things. They're being left out of this whole process. And, you know, I know this is the new age and everybody should have one and have access to it. We don't all, and if you're trying to reach some of the people
So how do you, how do you convey town business in your community?
Paper, you send stuff out to the mail stuff to them.
We do have a website that people can access.
Right, so I would encourage you to use your local channels of conveying information to just, you know, disseminate this information out.
My comment is not for Tinmit, it's for the regional planning commission.
Right.
You know, how have you addressed this in the, the whole region to make sure everybody has an opportunity to provide some input.
Sure, so during the first phase of community engagement, we did twenty, we did twenty-six pop-ups. So we had a pop-up in every community, I believe somebody was here at one of your storytelling events to generate awareness of what's, what is going on, that this plan update is underway. Um, we not only did the pop-ups, we had community information sessions on a, kind of across the region. Um, we had feedback sessions at our office. Um, you know, we, I, I honestly feel like we have utilized a wide variety of engagement methods to try to meet people where they're at and at least generate awareness about what is going on and give them, you know, access to information that is available digitally. I mean, if people don't have access to digital technology, they could always come to this office and view the materials. They could come to the regional planning commission and ru- review the materials. Um, I mean, unfortunately, it is kind of a consequence of where we're at as far as technology is concerned, that, you know, most people rely on the internet or a web-based system for accessibility. But if that isn't an option, that's why I'm bringing hard copies of things, they can be made available here at your office, so people don't actually have to leave from there. Or they could come to the regional planning commission office, if that's something they need.
Just more general, few cents.
Okay, and I, anyway, I'd encourage your feedback, if you're, you know, include that as part of whatever input you might have as a a response to the future land use map, if you feel that there would have been a better way for us to be engaging or dis- disseminating information, we'd love to hear it. Okay. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and pack up, thank you.
Thank you, you need help?
No, I'm all set, you guys have other meeting agenda items, I can just kind of quietly get my stuff together and we can move right on.
We're gonna take a short break, so I can have a snack.
I have carrots.
Me too.
It's oh six. Come back and do a session at six fifteen, is that working? Or, anybody that's on Zoom, we're coming back at six fifteen. Let me just leave it on, I'm just gonna stop the recording.